Good evening. Hello, everyone. Jason, that is the most spectacular background I've seen in a long time. You win.
Thank you.
Tonight, you're the winner.
We're all set on this side, Dr. Latif.
Outstanding. Are we good, Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. This meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under the Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2023 Amendment 29 to House Bill 29 Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continued operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. A motion is in order for the approval of closed session agenda. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wall seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one not present vote. Zaragapoor, motion passed.
Moving on to the motion, a motion passes, 7-0. Motion, moving on to the motion enter closed session. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with staff, to discuss with staff, the appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific employees under VA Code 2.2-3711A1. Two, to consult with Division Council and staff regarding specific personnel and student legal matters requiring the provision of legal's advice and actual or probable litigation under VA Code 2.2-3711A1, 2, 7, and 8. And, three, to discuss and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemptions pertaining to specific students under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2 and 8. And, four, to receive confidential report from the obudsman and advice from Division Council regarding legal matters involving specific personnel under VA Code 2.2-3711A1 and 8. And, five, to receive legal advice from Division Council and inform staff regarding school board contracts and contract authority under VA Code 2.2-37118 and A.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wall seconds. A motion. Any discussion? Okay, I see no discussion. Please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one not present vote. Zaragapoor, motion passed.
Seven yes, motion passes. At this point, the Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return open session in approximately one hour. Thank you. All right, the Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. We are going to be moving on to the closed session certification. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting on February 3, 2021 be adopted by the following resolution. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, excuse me, only such public business matters that were identified in the motion convening closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the board.
Do you have a second? Mr. Wilk seconds. Mr. Wilk seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Zaragapoor, motion passed.
Motion passes. We'll move on next to, we have two action items. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Mr. Wilk seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Wall's here. Okay.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Zaragapoor, motion passed.
Motion passes. Next action item, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the religious exemption from compulsory school attendance for cases RE 20-18, RE 20-19, and RE 20-20.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilk seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Zaragapoor, motion passed.
Okay, motion passes. Next, I'd like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. This meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under Virginia Code 223708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. At this moment, we'll go ahead and take pledge of allegiance. Ms. Williams, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, thank you. Next, we're moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second? Ms. Wall seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Zaragapoor, motion passed.
Excellent. So, motion passes. Next, we're going to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second? Ms. Wall seconds. A motion. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Zaragapoor, motion passed.
Motion passes. Next, we'll go to citizen comment time. Due to the COVID-19 state of emergency and legal restrictions on the school board's authority to conduct its meetings through electronic means, unlike other public bodies meeting electronically under more expansive legal authority, all discussion at this meeting by board members, staff, citizens must be limited to agenda items. Citizens may speak on an agenda item for two minutes. Citizens are also encouraged to submit their comments electronically by assessing accessing the public comment form and the school board webpage. Those citizens who have signed up in advance with the school board clerk via email no later than 4:00 PM today, February 3, 2021, may address the school board this evening in person or virtually about matters relating to February 3, 2021 agenda items only. There are, let me get my papers here, five in-person speakers and two virtual. So, we'll start with the in-person first, and you will see your time. You may approach the microphone. First, we have Gabriel Pola. Or Gabrielle Pola?
Good evening. I came here to speak about the kids coming back into schools. I understand the magnitude of this situation, but what I would like to ask is that there be some type of transparency on what the real number is to be considered. How many students would want to come back? How many families are often to stay home? I feel like we need to put some real data together to figure out when our children can be back in the classroom. What are the potential cases that can be contracted due to students being in school? And what are the real effects of students and parents in this demographic of ages from five to 50 years of age? These are all numbers that can assist in the decision for our kids to come back. I feel like it's all about the numbers, and these are the numbers to really consider. There's our success rates, our depression rates, our graduating rates, our hunger rate, suicidal rates, infection rate. These are all the numbers that could be composed to help us decide when our students can be back in the classroom. I feel like for them to be a classroom, it could be everything that they can be. You know, these students, they need happiness, education, structure, and morals, and that's what we need to be for our kids to be successful in this world. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brandy Provenzano, and my address is on file. Tonight, I'd like to take this time to acknowledge Black History Month. One of the great women writers of our time, Toni Morrison, once said, liberation means you don't have to be silenced. What a powerful quote to begin this month with, where we can celebrate the strong and fearless leaders who had the courage to speak up and speak out against injustice, even if it meant others would seek to destroy them. Another famous female writer, Zora Neale Hurston, said, if you want the good feeling that comes from doing things for other folks, then you have to pay for it in abuse and misunderstanding. Ruby Dee, a famous actress, playwright, and civil rights leader argued, the greatest gift is not being afraid to question. Rosa Parks, often inaccurately portrayed as just a tired housekeeper wanting a place to sit down, was instead a revolutionary leader who methodically planned and organized political events and rallies, and spoke from her heart when she said, you must never be fearful about what you do when you speak from your heart and what you're doing is right. She also stated, I had no idea history was being made. I was just tired of giving up. Similarly, Marian Anderson, a musician who performed everything from opera to spirituals, spoke out against oppression and corruption when she stated, as long as you keep a person down, some part of you has to be down there to hold that person down. So, it means you cannot soar as high as you otherwise might have. During African-American History Month, I hope everyone here can be inspired by the strong women leaders that came before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie Hansford.
Hi, my name is Maggie Hansford. My address is on file. Good evening, Chair Latif, school board members, Dr. Walts, and division staff. I want to start off by thanking all of who have worked so hard to expedite access to vaccines for our staff. Thank you for being present and volunteering at our vaccine sites. I want to continue to share members' concerns with the vaccine rollout. Educators continue to lack clear understanding surrounding who and when staff are chosen to receive vaccine appointments. This leads to frustration. We continue to ask for more communication and transparency. The email provided to staff to ask vaccine questions does not provide sufficient answers to their questions. PWA continues to ask that all employees be provided access to vaccines. We ask for increased transparency and more clear communication. There is no amount of communication that is too much during this time. Many members have concerns regarding mitigation strategies and feel they are not being heard by division and school board. I want to ensure that we are all on the same page. School has not been closed, and teachers are not refusing to work. It is the exact opposite. School is open, and teachers are working around the clock to ensure their students are receiving a quality education during a global pandemic. Educators have reached into their own pockets to pay for supplies, more this year than any year before. Educators are working longer hours than they have than any other year before. Competitive compensation is a must this year. A step in COLA is needed and deserved. Additionally, many of our staff have been working driving our students to school, feeding our students, and teaching in person since the first day of school. They've recognized that our county has been working more in person than any surrounding district. Our staff continues to deserve the hazard pay for their extraordinary efforts this year. I thank the division for their honesty during the last school board meeting regarding staffing issues. We must find a solution to the lack of substitutes that does not increase the workload of our staff. I want to thank everyone again for your work to provide access to vaccines. I look forward to partnering with the division and school board to ensure the safety of our students and staff, and I look forward to a budget presentation that prioritizes educators.
Thank you, Ms. Hansford. Rhona Call.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rhona Call. My address is on file. I'm back, this time in person. Last time I spoke to you virtually, and I'm so grateful that you've given me that choice. It's been 327 days since my sons have been to had the opportunity to experience the choice of in-person learning. Thank you to all of you who've engaged in a dialogue with me and listened, leading by an example I hope to see more follow. Thank you to all of you who've chosen to be part of the solution. Teamwork makes the dream work. This weekend, I experienced an event I can only describe as overwhelming and exhilarating. I got to spend 19 hours at the vaccine clinic. I was in awe. I wanted to be part of the solution but ended up leaving so humbled and fascinated. What a difference a week made. Ms. Heebner and her team were omnipresent, making all kinds of things happen for everyone, operating without a blueprint. They figured things out on the fly. No challenge got past them without being addressed, and they pulled off what many would have declared impossible. They were able to successfully vaccinate approximately 2,2500 teachers and staff. There are plenty of thanks to go around. The staff at Novant were amazing. Their nurses were buoyant, empathetic, and also omnipresent. They were comforting and soothing, yet empowering and bold. It was easy to be in their care. The school board team was also impressive. Ms. Wall stood there all day, both days, greeting people with a smile, guiding and accompanying them to the next step on their historic journey. Ms. Jackson came out to support and be part of the solution. Mrs. Zaragapoor was there adding her energy. Mr. Wilk's mask game was on, and Dr. Latif, the most common phrase heard from him was, okay, I'm ready to go home now, and yet every time we turned around, there he was, making sure everyone had what they needed. There was also a cameo by Ms. Ralston. The most profound part of it was the feedback I received. As a greeter and one of the last everyone spoke to before they got to the vaccine station, I was able to experience firsthand the electricity excitement and hope and joy of the day. The most popular statement by far I heard was, I'm so excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Close, not even?
Sort of, okay. It's Maadi Schreckengost.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm speaking today to advocate for my children and to advocate for the return to in-person learning. I have three children in three different schools within Prince William County. My husband and I have worked hard to keep our children focused on learning and maintaining healthy study habits as virtual learners. Many parents across Prince William County are seeing the effects of social isolation, decreased emotional development. This isn't anything new. This isn't anything you haven't heard of, but I'm here today to publicly state that parents and our students are quickly becoming increasingly fatigued with the current learning methodology. My children, like many accelerated learners within Prince William County, rely on extended courses, pre-AP classes, signet, athletics, music, strings, art, all of these that are in place that we seek to help develop our children into well-rounded students. These students deserve better than what they are currently receiving. They arguably can be placed in the same category as vulnerable learners. I would argue that accelerated learners are suffering from learning loss, and their academic progress is being stifled each day they are kept out of in-person learning. High schoolers rely on athletics, leadership programs, extracurricular activities, and achievements to help them prepare for college. I am grateful that the schools that my children attend are going above and beyond. Not everyone is receiving that. You are in a unique position at this time to be leaders in the recovery from the effects of the pandemic, and I encourage the board to stay the path towards in-person learning as it is expected to be decided on in the few weeks, and I implore the board to trust that the realistic, common sense mitigation strategies that are already in place are going to work. Children, administrators, teachers can be safe if they all adhere to the mitigation strategies in place. Stay on the course, board, and I ask you to stick to the current plan for returning to school. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the complete set of in-person speakers we have. Mr. Stevens, we have two that I have on my list for virtual. If you want to take over?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Latif. Our first speaker will be Jim Martin. You can go ahead and unmute yourself, and please stick to the two minutes, or I will, I'll turn off your microphone in two minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Martin. My information is on file with the board. I'm the father of two in-person students and one virtual student in Prince William County Schools. First, I want to extend a sincere thank you to the teachers, especially the in-person teachers who have adjusted the COVID procedures and their PPE, the virtual teachers who have not been permitted to return to in-person instruction and have adapted their virtual learning styles, the support staff and administrators who have made the necessary accommodations for in-person learning to happen, and the school board members who have supported the return to in-person learning have held strong in spite of opposition and efforts and their efforts to obtain vaccines for staff members. I encourage the board to continue to plan for the option for students to return to in-person learning on 2/25 and 3/2, if not sooner. There's only been one outbreak in county schools, and that involved one probable case of COVID with thousands of students in person right now. Students are cooperating in mitigation measures. The COVID metrics are down to 686 from a peak of 1127 just two weeks ago, and a positivity rating of 13.2, down from 17% just two weeks ago, and this number does not match the Northern Virginia number on the VDH website, which is currently 9.9%. Numerous studies have shown the benefits of in-person instruction outweigh the minimal risk encountered. I ask that you please give my fifth grade daughter the opportunity to reap the benefits of in-person learning. Please don't make her watch her brothers go to school any longer, and don't make another last minute change to add to the disappointment of this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandra Kern. You can unmute yourself, and you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Kern, and I reside in the Temec district, and I have a high school sped student and several grandchildren attending public schools as the next generation of young learners. I'm advocating for all students to have the choice to return to the classroom safely and with the greatest level of transparency. I clearly want students to be heard. Their needs for in-person learning, social and mental health concerns are paramount. We have a responsibility to provide an exceptional educational experience. I appreciate the eager teachers and staff that participated in last weekend's vaccinations. This was a wave of the best support hardship to stay on course to open schools. Bravo to all that made it a success, for our teachers to have their needs met. The path is clearing, the boxes are checked, and we're ready to move forward. We must navigate a movement for our children to thriving the classroom, getting an education and social supports they gain from each other. We are Prince William County strong, and we can do better for our students. We have science to lead us in opening. We have mitigation to keep us safe. We have new technology, and we can be growing and learning together. That's a fresh win under our sails. Reading skills are suffering, showed in the county data, and I repeat the same claim to you that reading is a life skill. Whether tutoring or remediation, we have to watch the clock. We cannot give back the over 300 days our students have been out of school. Please rise to support each other, and our students. They're the stakeholders that the whole school system is supposed to be applauding for their lead role in education. I thank the board for staying the course, and I look forward to more advocating on behalf of our children. Wash your hands, wear your mask, and let's get back to the buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. That was all that I had, Chairman Latif.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. So, that completes citizen comment time. Next, we'll move on to 1501, the student representative, Ben Kim, our student representative of the school board, senior at Unity Reed High School, will be joining us virtually this evening. Mr. Kim, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I appreciate, thank you for giving me the time to speak tonight. Right off the bat, I want to give a really big thank you to the school division, Dr. Walts, for the code red and delay this morning. It was really nice, and what a blessing. I don't really think you need me to say this, but students have definitely loved having an extra day to do homework and really enjoy nature, spend time with family, and have a sense of a normal school year. So, very good for mental health. I want to, in my speech tonight, I want to express how optimistic I am for the next coming months in PUCS. First, as mentioned, the vaccines. And from my point of view, this is extremely good news. It's like seeing the efficiency of the MAX vaccination at that great high school, Unity Reed, and their amazing new gymnasium, and all the responses on social media from teachers was extremely encouraging to me, and I can really only commend everyone for their efforts and hope for an even faster distribution in the coming months. In addition to great news about the vaccine, I was also encouraged by, I was able to visit Signal Hill Elementary School a few weeks ago, so a huge shout out to Principal Webb and the IT Department for organizing that. I visited with the senator from INS, Trent Fisher, and we sat in on a third-grade hybrid classroom, so got to see how concurrent was teaching, and I initially had my reservations about concurrent teaching, so it was nice seeing in person, but really seeing how the teacher was in control of the classroom and their very efficient setup, it really inspired me. Everything they're doing was very equitable, and neither of the rumors or the Zoomers were left behind. It was super fun. We did like this alligator fraction activity. All the kids could take part in it. In PE, they had this super cool Among Us activity. The kids were really pumped. It really made me want to join them. But however, I can only say so much about like from my high school point of view, so it was very, I really treasured being able to speak with the students themselves. And all the rumors, they seemed very excited to be back in person. The Zoomers were equally excited, and they recognized what the situation called for, and they were excited to go in the next day. But one initial concern of mine before I visited was mask wearing with the kids. I just wanted to see for myself, like, are these little kids capable of keeping them on all day? And based on what I saw, you know, I think they definitely are. A lot of students were nodding in agreement when one of them said, it's hard when it begins, but at the end of the day, I don't even notice my mask is there. So, that's really good news, and I feel like if we go hybrid with the older kids, it would be the same thing. So, yeah, my visit and vaccinations really instilled confidence in me for the hybrid model of learning. Right now, high schools or times are set to return on February 23, based on student input. Clearly, many are reluctant to return to old time, but however, I think their reluctance is a sign of how beneficial and how popular their start time is, because one can really only imagine how much worse student stress and mental health would have been like compounded if we remained at 7:30 for virtual. So, it's been, it's been really great. We have like a lot of stuff to probably back that up, and solid evidence from our county, but I do ask the school division to consider studying the effects of start time on students' performance, especially amongst a student group who's going to remain virtual the whole year. This is a really awesome chance to collect data and input from our own county before things return to normal, so we should seize this opportunity when we can. Lastly, I wanted to just briefly update the board on student and the Senate matters. Ashley mentioned last week about these videos we've been making, summarizing important news for PUCS students in under five minutes. We're calling them, quote, Senator summaries. You can find them on the Senate Twitter at PUCS Senate. Cyrell, the Garfield Senator, and I have co-hosted two episodes so far. We're kind of like Colin Jost and Michael Che from Weekend Update and USNOL, if you know about that. We made, kind of made these videos with the goal of getting more students engaged and educated about local news and providing accurate information with all fake news out there. So, we hope these summaries are educational, concise, and hopefully entertaining. So, we really appreciate if people could get the word out there so that students can be well-informed. We also really would like teachers, especially like civics and government classes, to consider sharing these to students, so that their concepts in their class can become more real as they learn about local government. Once again, you can just find these on Twitter at PUCS Senate or BenPUCS. Finally, I just wanted to highlight, you know, I highlighted a student this week, so as I mentioned, Cyrell, the Garfield Senator, and my co-host, he recently organized a discussion between Garfield students and Prince William Police Chief Phelps and magistrate, where students could ask about... where students could ask about, you know, what to do when confronted by an officer and about their rights. So it was really amazing to see that. I really believe in teaching students how to interact with authority. I want them to have a very solid understanding of local law by the time they leave our school system. And in addition to organizing this discussion with the police, Cyrell has also been selected as one of two nominees from the Pinmont region for the Jefferson Scholarship of UVA. So huge congratulations to Cyrell and the school community that has supported him in his endeavors. You have my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Really appreciate that. Next, we'll move on to Dr. Waltz, superintendent's time.
Thank you Chairman Latif and members of the board. Tonight's superintendent's time will have two parts. One will be the normal superintendent's time and then we have the presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget. So good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to update the school board, staff members, parents, students, community members on the important work occurring during the pandemic. During the pandemic, we continue our efforts to ensure that equity is embedded in all of the work that we do. As I share the proposed FY 2022 budget in a few minutes, you will see several examples of that commitment to this work. Our employees are continually receiving praise during the pandemic. I recently received a letter from the Division Superintendent for Lee County Public Schools who wrote to share his appreciation for our Transportation Department. Lee County Public Schools purchased five of our older school buses and the superintendent shared with me how impressed his mechanic's assessment of how well our buses had been cared for by Prince William County Schools. He said, and I quote, "Both mechanics and I were more impressed with the level of care, service, and overall maintenance records that we have found," end quote. I want to publicly recognize John Wallingford, Associate Superintendent for Finance and Risk Management, Al Shiroki, Associate Superintendent for Support Services, Shirley Posey, Director of Transportation, and David Walton, Supervisor of Vehicle Services, for their great care of our fleet of school buses, which carries our most prized cargo. January 24th through 30th was Virginia Schools' Principal Appreciation Week and I know many of our schools and school communities recognized our principals last week with cards, letters, and other meaningful gifts. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the rock star efforts of our principals during this very difficult pandemic. They are truly navigating in uncharted waters with information and expectations continually changing. I am extremely grateful for their efforts and support during the pandemic. This week is National School Counseling Week. As we try to survive this difficult pandemic, it is increasingly evident how important it is to support the mental health of our students and staff. I appreciate each and every one of our school counselors and the efforts they make every day to help our students. As you know, even during the pandemic, PWCS recognized the legacy of Martin Luther King Jr. through the participation of our students virtually in the MLK Junior Oratorical Competition. As we began the month of February, we will continue to honor him and many others as we recognize Black History Month. Although we cannot recognize resolutions during board meetings like we have in the past due to the restrictions associated with the pandemic, there couldn't be a stronger correlation to February as rare disease month as we work to overcome COVID-19 and a global pandemic. I would also like to recognize all of our employees who worked very hard during a pandemic to prepare our schools and our faculties, our facilities. More than 100 locations for a return to our buildings today after a major snowstorm that we have not experienced in over two years. Our transportation services staff members clean the buses and our custodians help shovel sidewalks. And thank you to the many facilities employees who worked hard plowing and treating our driveways and parking lot. February is School Board Appreciation Month. I cannot think of a more difficult time to be a school board member than during a pandemic. Because of the pandemic, our recognition, recognition efforts are tampered slightly, but I do want to share with you that we have a special appreciation presentation planned for our board members during our February 17th meeting. So stay tuned and also we do have some posters up from schools in the boardroom. Thank you and stay safe and healthy. And next, we will move into the budget.
Okay, Dr. Waltz, I think I have some comments to make before you present the budget. Is that correct?
Okay, yes, please.
Okay, so board members, as a quick reminder, while tonight is not the time to ask questions or make comments on the proposed 2021-22 budget, you will have an upcoming, you will have upcoming opportunities to do so. Instead, you can provide your questions directly to John Wallingford, Associate Superintendent for Finance and Risk Management, who will coordinate responses. The Prince William County School Board will hold a hybrid physical, virtual, public meeting on the superintendent's proposed fiscal year 2022 budget on Monday, this coming Monday, February 8th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. That meeting will also be, that'll be televised, so just like our normal meetings. Citizens who wish to speak in person or electronically must sign up by emailing the clerk no later than 4:00 PM on Monday, February 8th, 2021. Citizen comment time will be limited to two minutes per speaker and on the budget, right Carol? Right, and on the budget. Excellent. And so that'll be this coming Monday. At this point, Dr. Waltz, I will turn it over to you for the highly anticipated unveiling of the proposed 2022 fiscal year budget, sir.
Thank you Chairman Latif, Vice Chairwoman Zagapur, even in her absence, and all members of the board and our Prince William County Public Schools community. This evening, I'm presenting my proposed budget for the upcoming year. This will be my final budget proposal before my announced retirement at the end of the current year. I want to thank our teachers, administrators, support staff, parents, community, and school board for their support and the great successes we have achieved this year and for the past 16 years that I have proudly served as your superintendent. This past pandemic year has been unlike any other in my career and unlike any other in modern history. Last year, I presented a plan for our school division that focused on positioning us for student growth and focused on equity and academic achievement. Then, much like a boxer in the ring, together we took some hits that briefly tried to knock us off our stride. However, through the incredible hard work of all our employees and through collaboration with our students and their families, together we found our footing and got right back in the ring. Since the closure on March 13th for COVID-19, our school division has made some remarkable achievements. We have provided over 13 million meal equivalents. We procured and provided more than 90,000 laptops for students and staff along with free student internet access for those who need it. We implemented a new learning management system. We deployed tens of thousands of pieces of personal protective equipment, or otherwise known as PPE. We have served thousands of our most vulnerable learners in person since September and PWCS was the only Northern Virginia school division to do so. We developed and implemented a hybrid and virtual only option for our students. Our teachers pivoted to remote and hybrid learning in mere weeks. We have had continuous payroll throughout the pandemic and have had no reduction in our workforce. We have offered thousands of employees the COVID-19 vaccine and we are implementing our plan for all employees to be able to receive one. We have continued to focus on academic achievement and mental health of students. And we did all this during one of the most tumultuous and testing years in the history of our country. I could not be prouder to be superintendent of this remarkable school division. Tonight, we look ahead to the future that builds on the past 16 years of achievements we have accomplished together, including, first and foremost, we have achieved an on-time graduation rate that continues to rise to a now new high of 93%. That's a 10% increase over where we were only a decade ago. Second, the implementation of full-day kindergarten division-wide and pre-K expansions. These are critical to get our students on an early path towards student success. Third, high achievement in academic success, including 100% of schools receiving full state accreditation and high growth in our career and technical education certifications. And fourth, opening 24 new schools with two more planned for later this year and 36 school additions along with the Kelly Leadership Center and two transportation facilities, all on time and within budget. With this foundation of achievement, it is my goal that this budget proposal will set up my successor for success and provide the resources necessary to ensure our students have equitable opportunity and support for academic success and provide our employees the compensation they deserve for a job well done and will continue to do. This budget for fiscal 2022 faces a unique challenge for the first time in my tenure and that is one of reducing enrollment which is being experienced by school divisions in Virginia and across the US. Our reduction caused by the pandemic is estimated to be a decrease of approximately 1,057 students. This decrease in enrollment reduces our allocations to schools and departments by more than $13 million. The pandemic continues to create great uncertainty and we do not yet know how enrollment may change in the next couple of years. It is important to note that this budget proposal does not include the new CARES funding or the efforts related to using that funding. That money is still on the way to being secured. As I previously informed the school board, we are using the latest CARES funding in five major areas. First, to hire additional temporary teaching assistants to help our in-person elementary classes. Second, to fund the deferred capital projects that the school board approved last year to assist us in funding needs with our early response to COVID-19. Third, we will develop additional summer learning for students who may need additional academic support. Fourth, we are exploring additional in-person and virtual tutoring options, perhaps on Mondays after school and on Saturdays for those students who need additional support. And fifth, we will make an assessment and determination for any additional PPE investments necessary for this school year as well as purchasing for the next school year. Now turning to my priorities within the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget. My first budget priority is pandemic-related student and employee support. Beyond the items I mentioned we are funding from CARES, we have made a number of investments that will need to continue to be supported. This includes additional staffs to support our communication efforts, benefits, technology, and student services in our focused coordination of our pandemic response. Nothing is possible without our outstanding employees. Therefore, my second priority in this budget is support for our teachers and staff who are the heart of our success. I am very pleased tonight to propose a step increase for all eligible employees in addition to a cost of living increase. This will total an average of nearly 3.8% increase in pay for employees. Additionally, while healthcare costs have increased nationally, I am proud to announce that my budget proposal again includes no, I repeat, no increase in employee healthcare costs for the third year in a row without any reduction in benefits. As an education organization, we continue to encourage our employees to grow and learn and I am proposing an additional $100,000 investment over and above what we currently have in our tuition reimbursement for employees. My third budget priority is educational equity and academic achievement. Many of the items included in this area come straight from the recommendation of the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity. This is living equity day to day and equity in action. This includes $4 million in funding for the regional special education program to cover loss and funding from the state as well as $2 million to supplement our summer school programming to support students that may need additional support this year. This would be distributed according to our economically disadvantaged formula and $1 million for K-12 division-wide English language arts textbook adoption. I am also proposing $836,000 for Title IX funding adjustments to support equity and student activities programming. Additionally, this budget proposes positions to support equity, five additional special education staffing support administrative interns, and additional technology staff to support directly our schools with their digital equity, now that we have a device for every student in our division. Within this category, I am also excited to propose $1 million to begin the process of creating a full-time virtual high school. As we have learned from the pandemic, virtual learning can be beneficial for some students along with the flexibility that it can offer. This investment will help build upon the lessons learned and bring further choices to our students. My fourth budget priority is pre-kindergarten access that directly relates to equity and achievement. As you know, early childhood learning is critical to future success. Tonight, I propose nearly a $1 million additional investment in our pre-K programs by adding five additional pre-K classrooms. My fifth priority is student mental health and wellness. This budget continues and expands our wraparound support in a number of ways. As we have learned during the pandemic, supporting the mental health and wellness of students and staff is crucial. To support this work, I am proposing adding 15 additional counselors at the elementary level as well as six additional psychologists and two additional nurses. My sixth priority is around sustainable facilities, school safety, and support for infrastructure. In this area, we will continue to make critical investments in our physical buildings, information technology, transportation, and other support services. This includes the projects as outlined in our capital improvement program. Highlights include fenestration projects, also known as windows and/or door improvements at Fred Lynn and Grand Park Middle School. Embarking on a plan to address school auditorium lighting and sound equipment, more than $23 million investment in roof replacements at Freedom, Battlefield, Forest Park, and Osborne Park High Schools, Ripon Middle School, and Neatsco Elementary School. $21 million in heating, ventilation, and air conditioning improvements to include Brentsville and Woodbridge High Schools, Graham Park and Unity Braxton Middle Schools, and Coles Elementary School. As well as a $4 million investment in modernizing our legacy financial and payroll system, which is the backbone enterprise system that must be upgraded as it is ending its lifespan. Additionally, this includes $2 million in core ongoing IT systems such as our learning management system Canvas, as well as our student information system, The Hub. These are just a few of the highlights of the major proposals in my budget. In just a moment, I will turn it over to Mr. John Wallingford, our Associate Superintendent for Finance and Risk Management, who will provide a few more highlights and additional detail on the numbers. Before I do, I want to congratulate John and his entire team for their incredible hard work, especially this year with the complexities of the pandemic and the various accounting requirements tied to the CARES funding. As a testimony to the professionalism of the Office of Financial Services, PWCS is receiving the 2021 receiving the twenty-twenty-one Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International, also known as ASBO. PWCS has been participating in the Meritorious Budget Award Program for twenty-five years, and in the words of ASBO, it is quote, "A true reflection of the district's commitment to fiscal integrity," end quote. Congratulations again, John, and to your entire team. I am so proud of what we have accomplished together. I am certain with this budget and the support of our entire community, the future for PWCS is bright. Together, we will continue to ensure that every one of our students in Prince William County receives a world-class education. Thank you, and I now turn it over to Mr. Wallingford.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz, and congratulations to you, sir, on your final budget. It's been both an honor and a pleasure to work with you. Before I get started, I want to mention a couple of folks who have actually done the majority of the work. Kathleen Addison is currently our acting finance director. Many of you may be aware of that. She's filling in while our finance director is out recovering. She's been instrumental getting this work done. She's been doing two jobs, and I can't thank her enough. Natasha Valencia and Connie McDuffie have also been carrying a huge workload. They've worked tirelessly getting us here, and I would really like to thank them. And everyone in the budget office and the Office of Financial Services, and all the support from folks in all the other departments in school who make this happen. Those awards aren't because of me, they're not because of any one or two people, they're because of that full team, and I couldn't appreciate them more. So tonight, to get to the presentation, tonight, I'm going to highlight some key areas. Dr. Waltz is certainly a very difficult act to follow, and he has gone over most of the material, but I'm going to share a couple of additional points. I'm not going to go through line-by-line detail. It's a process we used to go through, but what I will do is address questions at future work sessions on any of the detail that you're going to receive tonight when you receive our executive summary. It's been our practice in the past to hand that out during the meeting, but because there's so many folks virtual this year, we will be emailing it towards the end of my presentation. I would encourage you to read the whole document. There's a lot of information in there. You may learn some stuff you don't know. So a couple of reminders real quickly before we get going into the numbers. Code of Virginia Section twenty-two dot one at dash ninety-two requires the superintendent develop and present to you a proposed budget that meets the needs of the school division in tonight. That's exactly what he has done. Once that is done, the school board reviews, revises, approves, and submits a budget to the county that meets, again, meets the needs of the school division. And the county's role in this process is to fund a minimum funding to the school board. They are responsible for setting tax rates. And last item I'd like to mention before we move on is line item authority. They do not have that control. That level of control is left to you. They only have an option to budget on a lump-sum basis or in broader state categories. Next slide, please. So a couple of highlights. For the fiscal year twenty-two budget, this budget proposes an operating budget of one-point-two-two billion dollars, which is an increase of just about two-point-four percent over the current fiscal year. That's fiscal twenty-one. This budget is built on projected enrollment of ninety thousand nine-hundred-ninety-one students, and it provides funding for each of the categories, the priorities that the superintendent outlined just a few moments ago, and we'll get to that in just a few minutes. Next slide, Jason, please. Okay, so what you see here are enrollment trends. As I mentioned, our budget's built on a projected enrollment of ninety thousand nine-ninety-one. As you're aware, the division experienced a reduction in enrollment as a result of the pandemic in fiscal twenty-one, the current year. You can see this reflected on the chart to the left. There's a little bump down there. It's a very uncommon experience for us, as we've been growing at a rate of about two percent per year over the past twenty-five years, with some slowing in the past five years of that growth rate. To reiterate Dr. Waltz's comments, that is a reduction of one thousand fifty-seven students from the prior year's adopted budget. We expect enrollment to slowly recover, and you can see those numbers on the slide. The chart to the right examines enrollment growth over a moving five-year period for some specific categories and then all students. We continue to see growth. If you recall this slide from last year, those numbers were larger. The growth rate of the current year and the reduction in enrollment in the coming years really impacted that chart. We do continue to see growth, and we do continue to see growth in those categories that put more fiscal pressure on the school division. Next slide, please. So just a couple of highlights. Enrollment impact mentioned already, a thousand fifty-seven reduction from fiscal twenty-one to fiscal twenty-two. We've been held harmless on this enrollment reduction by the General Assembly, at least for the time being. CARES, we had about fifty-five million dollars in ESAR, GEAR, and CRF funds that were received by the county, by the county schools in both fiscal twenty and twenty-one. As you're aware, signed in December, at the end of December, is another thirty-nine-point-one million dollars that will be coming to the school division. That is not reflected in this current budget. We will be increasing the fiscal twenty-one budget the current year when those funds become available, and those dollars, those monies will be carried forward to the next fiscal year. Next slide, please, Jason. So cost per pupil, these are familiar slides. The numbers don't change. We've added an additional year, and what you can see is Prince William County Public Schools is still near the right side of that chart. Our cost per pupil going into fiscal, or excuse me, in fiscal twenty-one is twelve-thousand six-hundred-and-forty-three dollars per pupil. And the calculation that we like to do and share with you is what would happen had we received the same funding levels on a per-pupil basis as Fairfax, Loudoun, and Arlington? You saw those numbers last year. They're similar. Fairfax this year, we received the same funding level. It would be three-hundred-and-fifty-one million dollars more than the current year. Loudoun would be about two-hundred-and-thirty-four million. And if we received the same funding levels as Arlington County, we would have received about six-hundred-and-thirty-one million dollars more than we expect for the current fiscal year. Next slide, please, Jason. Cost per pupil over time, this is another one that you've seen in the past, and the point I'd like to make is that we have finally achieved a per-pupil expenditure greater than we had in two thousand and nine. Two thousand and nine, it was ten thousand seven-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. This year, this budget year twenty-two, we'll be at eleven thousand and thirty-eight dollars. Finally, over the top. If you recall, just two or three slides ago, we were talking about the different categories that put pressure on the school division. Point to be made here, not to be missed, is the fact that even though we are back to levels that we had in two thousand and nine, our enrollment, our population is different, and we should be seeing higher expenditures per pupil, and that is a function of the revenue that we can receive, that we get from the state and county, and we'll talk about that towards the end of this presentation. Next slide, please, Jason. So now I'm going to talk briefly about the superintendent's six budget priorities that he went through, and I'm going to share with you some specifics of note here, however, is that what you're seeing on these slides, these next six slides, is not everything. It is selected items out of each one of those categories, and you can review those, all of those items, when you receive a copy of the executive summary and see those detail numbers. So here, the superintendent's first budget priorities, pandemic student and employee support, and you can see that we are spending, and all of these dollars are on FTEs necessary to support activities taking place because of the pandemic. You see pandemic coordinators, crisis communications, positions in our, position in our communications office, crisis management readiness, and insurance and workers' comp. Our workers' comp and unemployment insurances have skyrocketed because of the pandemic. And then finally, additional FTEs and benefits and human resources to support all of the additional effort that they're having to undertake. Next slide, please. So teacher-employee compensation, the superintendent's second budget priority, a two-point-eight percent on average step for eligible employees plus a one percent COLA, with no healthcare increase, no VRS increase, and then an additional one-hundred-thousand dollars to go to our tuition reimbursement accounts. Next slide, please. Educational equity, this is priority number three, educational equity and academic achievement. Large-dollar items here, regional school funding. We've had to provide an additional four million dollars because of the reduced revenues that we're receiving from the state. At this point, going into fiscal twenty-two, we will have lost about seventeen to eighteen million dollars in revenue over that five-year period. Second item, school-based summer school, Dr. Waltz mentioned, two million dollars. A million dollars for textbook, English language arts textbooks, digital equity and virtual high school, a million three-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. Title IX funding at eight-hundred-and-thirty, and then equity positions, coordinator and support staff to the extent of two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Budget priority number four, pre-kindergarten. We're adding nine-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars to increase our pre-K classes to fifty-four. This is part of the VPI grant from the state. Next slide. Student mental health and wellness. Again, these are not all the items. You have to take a look at the detail in the executive summary, and there are funds spent in the CARES Act on some of these items. These, however, five-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars for psychologists, six. Just shy of two-hundred-thousand dollars for two additional school nurses. Fifteen-point-seven FTEs to the tune of about one-point-five million dollars. That's a reduction of the state's ratio from three-seventy-five to three-twenty-five. Next slide, please. And finally, the superintendent's priority number six. That's facilities, school safety, and support infrastructure. This clearly is not everything, but you heard at our work session, our ten-year CIP of over a hundred-and-forty projects. As Dr. Waltz mentioned, four million dollars to upgrade a system that hasn't been upgraded in almost ten years, our finance, payroll, and human resource system. Legal and audit positions, about five-hundred-thousand dollars for those. And then increased support for information technology maintenance costs, and those are associated to both Lexia and Canvas, the new systems that we've implemented to help support us through the pandemic. In addition to other increased in maintenance costs, those costs typically go up on an annual basis. Next slide, please. So to some of the specifics, the numbers. County revenue, I'm not going to touch on each one of these. I'm going to mention two or three that are important. Our total, our total is up about thirty-three million dollars over fiscal twenty-one for a two-point-six percent increase, and that is an increase of about four-point-four million dollars for debt service to support the CIP I just mentioned. And then our operating fund is up about twenty, just shy of twenty-nine million dollars for a two-point-four percent increase over the prior year. Next slide, please. So the five-year plan, the five-year plan, we're required to balance that. The point that's significant to make here is that just because this five-year plan is balanced going out through fiscal twenty-two sixty-six, that doesn't mean there aren't significant, significant budget challenges we face. We could certainly use more funding than you see there in the five-year plan. Next slide, please. So to close up the conversation, our budget timeline, you see the third is the presentation we're making tonight. You can see the public meetings, the public hearings, and the work sessions. On the seventeenth of March, it's our intention to have the school board adopt the budget. We will go to the county on April sixth, and then final date for our BOCs budget approval this year is April twentieth. So one or two more points I want to make about the executive summary and the other data that we typically share with you in person. That is going to be emailed to you at the conclusion of this conversation, so it should be coming to shortly. Again, to reiterate Dr. Latif's points, there will be no questions this evening, but please feel free to forward your questions to me, and we'll coordinate and get answers to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wallingford. Dr. Waltz? Do you have anything further to add?
No, not at this time.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you, and we look forward to working with you all on this, and as you, as John reminded, everyone, please forward questions to him. We will again on February eighth, which is this coming Monday, have the public meeting that is required by law on the proposed budget. Again, it's Monday, February eighth, twenty-twenty-one at six P.M. here at the Kelly Building and/or virtually. Next, we'll move to seventeen oh one, superintendent's update on the pandemic. Dr. Waltz?
Thank you, Chairman Latif, members of the board. As we provided an extensive update last week, tonight's update will be brief. Following my remarks, I will turn it over to Ms. Denise Heebner, Associate Superintendent for Special Education and Student Services, who along with her team will provide further details on the latest health information. The numbers of COVID-nineteen cases in PWCS are dynamic. As of Monday from January twenty-four through thirtieth, we had one-hundred-and-thirty-three confirmed cases of students and staff, comparable to the previous week of January seventeenth through twenty-third of a hundred-and-eighty-one cases. For the month of January, we had eight-hundred-and-fifty-six cases compared to three-hundred-and-twenty-six cases in December. Please remember, in December, we were closed for two weeks, and in January, we returned second and third grade to in-person learning. As a reminder, the PWCS website has a dashboard with the most recent available cases. PWCS continues to work as rapidly as possible to maximize all available vaccinations. Prince William County Public Schools has been working to secure vaccinations for school division staff through the Prince William Health District, Inova, and Novant UVA Health Systems. I especially want to thank Ms. Heebner for her efforts coordinating our vaccination clinic with Novant UVA this past weekend, which successfully provided a first vaccination for about two-thousand-four-hundred employees. And thank you, Chairman Latif, as well for helping to secure some of our initial vaccinations. The clinic was a tremendous success and included a visit from the governor and first lady, the Secretary of Education. the secretary of education, and a snowstorm. I want to thank our nurses who are working hard as part of the efforts to vaccinate, as well as our student services, human resources, risk management, communications, information technology and facility staff who are all supporting this effort. In addition, I want to thank Unity Reed principal, Richard Nichols, along with his staff for hosting and supporting the event. And thanks to members of the school board who volunteered their time to assist the event. Our human resources team led by Donna Eagle, Dr. Donna Eagle, is working extremely hard to ensure we offer vaccines to every employee as quickly as possible. Please remember, PWCS has no control, I repeat, no control over the number of vaccinations that are made available. By the end of this week, we anticipate optimistically approximately 11,350 employees will have been offered a first appointment. This includes all tier-one employees, those with documented health conditions with human resources, along with all those age 65 and older, all employees working in high-risk jobs as defined by the Virginia staff in high-risk job as defined by the Virginia Occupational Safety and Health, and all employees that have been working in person. Appointments will continue to be offered to those remaining based on return date and then central office and other employees. Those who may have missed an opportunity will be provided additional opportunities as available. By the end of this coming weekend, it is expected that approximately 8,270 staff will have received their first vaccinations. Please note that all our employees are working extremely hard to serve our students to our fullest ability as we work to implement the school board plan for return to in-person learning with all of the appropriate mitigations to make it as safe as possible. I would like to conclude my remarks by reminding parents to think of COVID-19 again, much like inclement weather which we experienced the last few days. Just as in inclement weather situations, parents and guardians make the ultimate choice on sending your students to school. Parents and guardians whose students are in person but feel that it is now unsafe can opt back into all virtual instruction at any time by simply contacting your school. Finally, just as in inclement weather, I will not hesitate to utilize the authority provided to me by the school board to take such measures as I consider necessary to protect the health of students and staff, including measures needed to respond to the impact of the pandemic on individual schools. This could include changes to school operations with limited notice due to the constant dynamic situation with COVID-19, and should a school or schools have a significant impact at any time. At this time, I would now like to turn this over to Ms. Heebner.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, members of the school board. Dr. Waltz, before we get started with our update, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome the newest member of our pandemic team, Ms. Priya Sharma. I believe Ms. Sharma is joining us virtually. Hello, Priya. Ms. Sharma brings a wealth of knowledge to our team, firsthand experience, as she is currently serving, or was currently serving, as the nurse at Fitzgerald Elementary. So Ms. Sharma has jumped right in, and I'm confident that she's going to be a valuable resource not only to our team but to our schools. So Ms. Sharma is already trained in case investigation, will be working closely with our student health leadership team to learn all there is about pandemic and to support our schools during this time. She's a perfect complement to our current pandemic coordinator, Ms. Heather Wines. These two brave women stand ready to support our staff and students. Next slide, please. As part of our presentation, we'll be looking at school impact data, the health of our community, and providing updates on vaccines. While Mrs. Slater, our fearless director of student services, is out on leave supporting her family, Ms. Wines will be stepping in as one of our presenters. While Ms. Slater is not here this evening, I would like to recognize her leadership and her hard work throughout this past year. As always, Ms. Slater has my unwavering support and the support of our team, and we want to assure her that she is missed, but we have her back and we will be okay. And now I would like to turn the presentation over to Ms. Polk.
Thank you, Mrs. Heebner. Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the school board and Dr. Waltz. Next slide, please. I will provide a summary of the Division's school impact data, and this is from January 15th through February 1st of this year. The student positive and probable positive cases for in-person learners account for 0.75% of the in-person student population. The numbers of cases being treated as positive for in-person students is 91 for this timeframe. Student positive and probable positive cases for virtual learners account for 0.3% of the virtual student population. The numbers of cases being treated as positive for virtual students is 225. We have received 951 student surveillance forms. Of those, 542 were for students who were not ill and have been asked to quarantine because of a close contact with someone with COVID-19. This accounts for 57% of all surveillance submissions. We have received 352 staff surveillance forms. Of those, 187 were for staff members who were not ill and have been asked to quarantine because of a close contact with someone with COVID-19. This accounts for 53% of all surveillance submissions. And finally, we have two, school outbreaks have occurred, one for Charles J. Colgan Senior High School and Fitzgerald Elementary School. I will share that we have another elementary school that is currently being monitored for an outbreak. That concludes my presentation. I will now turn the presentation over to Mrs. Heather Wines, one of our pandemic coordinators. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Polk. Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the board and Dr. Waltz. My name is Heather Wines, and I serve as the pandemic coordinator in the Office of Student Services. I'm happy to join all of you this evening. On this slide, you will see data regarding those situations in which students had to quarantine between January 15th and February 1st. You will note that most of our close contacts are not ill and are being quarantined per CDC guidelines as a precaution. During this period of time, it has been reported to us that 613 students have been quarantined. Next slide, please. Here, you will see our student positive case data broken out by student learning environment. Again, you can see the majority of our positive cases are for those students learning virtually. In all situations, the number of positive cases account for less than 1% of the student population. Next slide, please. On this slide, you will see data regarding those situations in which staff members had to quarantine between January 15th and February 1st. Again, you will see that most of our close contacts are not ill and are being quarantined per CDC guidelines as a precaution. During this time period, it has been reported to us that 205 staff members have been quarantined. Next slide, please. And finally, you will see our staff member positive case data broken out by work environment. You will see that our in-person staff members are affected by positive cases at a higher rate than our virtual staff members. In all situations, the number of positive cases account for less than 2% of the staff member population. I will now turn the presentation back to Mrs. Heebner.
Thank you. Next slide, please. As you can see, our local metrics are improving, but our core indicators do remain at the highest risk category. Next slide, please. The Virginia Department of Health and Virginia Department of Education have provided us a guide to assist with our decision-making, and this is to be used in combination with our CDC school metrics. As you'll recall from our last meeting, at the school level, we consider individual school impact data, absenteeism, and the school's ability to staff buildings. This may vary from school building to school building. At the division level, we consider the effectiveness of our ability to mitigate, and we look at the individual and the group school data, school impact data. At this time, our level of community transmission remains at the highest. However, our ability to mitigate places at the low impact category, which outlines that we should be prioritizing our students for whom instruction is most critical. I would like to remind our community that virtual learning remains an option for all students, and in-person attendance is a choice. We believe our success can be attributed to the slow phasing of our students and our staff's hard work to implement mitigation strategies. Next slide, please. So I'm very pleased to be able to provide an update on our vaccination plan. I will not be showing a slide with the dates and locations at this time as to as to not create confusion because things do evolve rather rapidly. An additional, we have additional opportunities that are forthcoming, we will confirm, and we have firm places, firm plans in place for 15,000 to 17,000 vaccines. So this will include all of our Prince William County School family members, in-person, virtual, certified, classified, our subs, our wrappers. We will continue our clinics until every staff member's needs are met. I will dare say that, Dr. Latif, your advocacy and the work of the board members, as well as the efforts of Dr. Waltz and our leadership team have resulted in our division being ahead of schedule for vaccinating our staff during one of the most challenging times. We have had great success, and we're very pleased with the outcome of our clinics. I'd also like to recognize the Prince William County Health District and Dr. Ansher for their support and for making our students a priority and making it possible for our team to provide vaccine clinics to our staff. At the start of our partnership with Novant, I was hopeful that we could achieve a workable agreement. The level of partnership and the customer service from our healthcare partner has exceeded my wildest dreams. I will say their administration, their nurses have outshined the brightest stars. Michelle, Tori, Allison, Heather, Jared, Michelle, Kim, everyone, we are grateful and committed to continuing this great adventure until every single staff member in Prince William County has a vaccine. Our school nurses have always commanded respect for me for all the hard work that they do with such care, but I will say I have never been more in awe of such a group, this group of such amazing professionals. They're led by Ms. Polk and Ms. Bellamy. Our nurses are the key to the success of these clinics, and I am extremely grateful for their hard work. There is much work in the days to come. This is not just a one-time weekend, we will be continuing to, to conduct these clinics through the end of March, so I appreciate the support from our school staff, our school leaders, and all those who are helping our nurses be successful. Dr. Waltz recognized that we're grateful for our board members' participation in last week's event, as well as our entire team. This past weekend was a team event with contributions from each of our members of senior staff and all departments. Dr. Nichols, the very, very proud principal of Unity Reed High School and his team have been nothing less than amazing to work with. Mr. Barton, Mr. Bouchard, Mr. Turner, and the custodial team were key in the success of the clinic as well, so I would like to thank their team. So the snow made me a little bit nervous, but our team was able to navigate. Risk management, facilities and communications, human resources, and our levels and school leaders all worked together to combat the challenge. VDOT was there, the roads were clean, we were able to successfully continue with our clinic and achieve our goal. I want to personally thank my assistant, Stephanie Standard, who's been an integral part of the coordination of these clinics, serving as the go-to, the onsite manager both these last few weekends and the weekend before. Actually, her work goes beyond that. She's been more than a support to me, she's been a friend and an endless support. I just have been very grateful and thankful for her support during this challenge, and I felt she needed to be recognized. At our previous meeting, we shared that we completed almost 1,000 vaccinations for our tier-one employees. We received last-minute appointments for Inova on January 29th, and we were able to complete another 450 vaccinations. I would like to just clarify that when I say last minute, I mean last minute, because we have communicated, we are willing at a moment's notice to take any opportunity available to our staff. So while sometimes this is very short notice, it is not the only opportunity for our staff members. We have a great partnership with Inova as well, and I am to the point with our contacts where if they contact me, they send me text messages, they'll say, "We've got room for 100." We say, "We'll make it happen." And we did that just this afternoon. With, within an hour, we were able to identify and fill 150 appointments that we would not have had otherwise. So we're grateful for that partnership, and we'll continue to navigate and utilize that avenue. It's a nice option for some of our staff members. We received, on January 30th and 31st, we completed 2,496. This Friday, we will complete another 875 vaccinations, and on February 6th, we will complete 1,800. Today, we're able, as I mentioned, to provide another 150 last-minute vaccinations with our partners at Inova. The team at Inova continues to be a pleasure to work with, and we're continually to be great, continually grateful for their partnership. We have another potential quick turnaround for appointments this Thursday, Friday. Again, they're not confirmed, but we are working, and we are hopeful that we'll be able to add possibly up to 400 or 500 extra vaccinations on top of our current total. So the number of vaccinations that will be achieved by the end of the second week of February will be in excess of 10,000. Next slide, please. I would encourage those who have questions to review our webpage, we will, we are keeping that updated. Additionally, assistance is available at our email address, pwcs-vaccinations.edu. So at this time, that concludes our presentation, and I will turn it back over to Dr. Waltz.
Dr. Waltz, do you have anything further to add?
I'm all set. Thank you, Chairman Latif.
Okay. What we'll do is, you know, Dr. Waltz promised to be brief tonight on the pandemic update, as did Ms. Heebner. If board members have questions, let's try to keep those brief and looking for things that we haven't already asked or already have answered before. I'd like to just start out by saying, you heard a lot of thank yous. It, it, it was an incredible sight to see at Unity Reed High School this weekend. 2,500 shots delivered. I mean, the custodial staff, the snow plowing staff, our facilities folks, while other clinics around the region shut down for Sunday and Monday and Tuesday, we delivered 1,250 shots. Not a single dose went wasted at any of the four clinics I was involved with, with Novant on, on the prior two Saturdays, Sundays, and then this Saturday, Sunday. It was quite an achievement, I think Denise Heebner, Teresa Polk, Gina Bellamy, our, our team, you all who participated, every one of the nurses who's volunteered, who came in, Novant staff are putting the entire school division on your back to carry us across this finish line to hopefully end this pandemic. And so I don't think enough thank yous can go around, and, and to the school board members who came out, and all the volunteers who showed up. It was absolutely incredible, and, and it was just an exciting thing to see with people just chipping in from, from everywhere and, and how happy they were. I want to particularly from the entire school board, also thank Governor Ralph Northam, the First Lady Pamela Northam, Secretary of Education Athav Karne for coming up from Richmond to participate in the clinic. Chair Wheeler also stopped by, as Longwood Senator Jeremy McPike, to take a look at the setup, the efficiency, the smooth flow was outstanding. For those, and I do get a lot of emails on, on some of our faculty and staff who are concerned about not being invited for a vaccine, if, if you didn't hear Ms. Heebner say it, please be patient. Everyone will get a shot. We have them, we're getting them. It's, it's a matter of creating the systems to, to adequately get them out, but, but no one will be missed. If you feel like you've been missed, send us the emails, we'll get you in the queues, and it's, it's really important. We, we are working on it, so please be patient. These folks have put together systems that we did not have before in ways to reach out to our employees, our students, our faculty, to do things we haven't had to do before because of the pandemic. And so my hat's off to our information technology people, our finance people. HR has done an incredible amount of work on making this happen, and, and thank you. And let's thank Dr. Ansher. For all, anyone listening, please, you know, send an email over to Dr. Ansher's office to thank her and the Prince William Health District for making this possible. And if you are at Novant, thank a nurse over there. They have all chipped in at Novant, at Prince William Hospital in Haymarket, sent volunteers over who were working four shifts for us over the weekend, just bouncing around with enthusiasm and excitement about being able to participate. So just a, a great weekend and a lot of optimism moving forward. Our metrics are looking better every day, and so it's just generally an exciting, sort of hopeful light at the end of the tunnel, end of the pandemic. So I don't have a whole lot of questions there. I think I've done my thank yous, and, and I will turn it over. If anyone has a question, we'll go around, and, and again, please keep it to the questions if you're looking for new questions or new answers, or, or old ones, as you wish. Anybody here? Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I want to echo the chairman's statements with regards to the vaccine. I do believe it was a team effort, and, and there just really aren't enough words to commend everyone who took part in enabling those vaccination clinics to be successful. to be successful. I have a question, a few questions in regards to our return to building plan. Is the purview of this board to meet on the 17th to make other determinations? Maybe, maybe not. We'll see when we get to that date. But in anticipation of that, you know, I've said before that we are right now scheduled for approximately 30% of our student body to return to buildings to continue their learning. And my main question is, what services will we no longer be able to provide to our virtual students? And what services will we be putting in place as we upend our entire system for the minority of our population? That is not a norm that we are accustomed to. So be it good or bad or whatever, we just don't normally operate like that. So what are we going to be doing as a school division to put in place additional resources for those 60% of the students who will be remaining virtual, who will lose out on some of the benefits that they have now? For example, extra time with their teachers because now the teachers will be busy doing other things, be it bus schedules or standing in the hallway or whatever have you. I'm extremely concerned about this because it's the end of the school year. And that is typically the time of year when we, as a school division, put in additional resources to support our students with their end-of-the-year tasks, be it SOL testing or AP testing or any of those kinds of things. I am just really concerned because our school day goes, you know, for our youngest learners, some of them will start 9:00, 9:30. Their day doesn't end until 4:00, 4:20, 4:30. Then they have to get home and get on a bus and all of those other things. And that's just elementary. And it goes like that in addition for middle and for high school. I'm concerned because we do have double busing. It's going to be a longer day in general for our students. It's going to be an exceedingly longer day for our staff. So I also want to know what supports we are putting in place to help our staff cope because this will be, I don't know, the third or fourth layer of additional duties and things that we've asking our teachers, support staff, custodial staff, to undertake when we have more students returning into a building. In addition to that, I'm asking these things because I can ask them through email, but then our public won't know because we may not go over them publicly. We would just get a response as board members. And I think it's important that we share this information with the public. I'd also like to know if we have received our updates from our PALS testing and second semester grades to see really what this virtual learning picture looks like for us as a division. We often hear about statewide scores, but considering Prince William County is one of 42 counties out of 100 and some, I mean, 42 school divisions out of over 100 school divisions that has any type of in-person or hybrid learning. I don't accept easily when a newspaper article or something says, "The students are failing and virtual is horrible," because they're looking at a statewide picture and we are not fitting into that statewide picture. So I would like to know how our students are doing. I'm also concerned too, you know, about our capability to mitigate when we have more students in, how are we going to do this through an equity lens? Recognizing that some schools may have 50 or 60% of their population choose to return to in-person, in-person in a building learning versus another school which may only have 10 or 20%. What are we doing to, what extra mitigation measures are we going to be putting in place? What does that look like for us? Because I think one of the things that I consistently hear from the public is, "Well, you know, we have great mitigation factors. It's good. This principal is fantastic. They have a plan." But we don't look at it from a division in its full picture. Maybe a particular principal has something that's wonderful and a plan and their school's only getting 10% of their students in, but another school may have 80. So what are we doing as a division? How are we looking at that? How are we planning for those things? Because that's important. And then I understand that we'll have our staff. Where will we be when staff vaccinations and all of the other mitigations that we're putting in place on the day that we have decided to ask all of our staff to return, which I think is like the February 22nd or 23rd? What is the impact to our school division when having all of our staff return into buildings? And will there be any staff that will remain just strictly virtual to teach our students and be available for them? So those are some of the main things that I think that are worth public discussion and for this board to consider as we accelerate our students returning into buildings to continue their learning. And then also, I think it would be helpful too, if we could sort of maybe have a very mini brief presentation on what our buildings look like, what our typical day is going to look like for our students. Because again, I hear a lot of social interaction in our parents and our guardians request for their students to return to buildings. And I don't think as a school division, we've done a really good job of explaining the limit to social interaction, if there will be any, you know, really at all. Because I think depending on what level of education you're at, that social interaction piece looks very different. It would look very different for an elementary schooler versus a middle schooler versus a high schooler. And I don't know that, you know, we're really having the public understand what that means for their student when they return into a school building to learn. So thank you. That's all I have.
Dr. Waltz?
I didn't need any of those answered tonight.
Okay. We weren't sure.
It's all for next week. Everyone's face looks like, "Oh, my God."
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was going to suggest, Dr. Latif and Mrs. Williams, because...
I'm hearing a little bit of background, Jason, somewhere? Okay, great.
I'm sorry for the background noise, Dr. Latif. I was going to suggest, hearing Mrs. Williams' number of questions or concerns raised, that yes, we would try to do our best to address those as well, decode all the information and include in the Q and A and decipher what we can bring forward and go from there, if that would be all right.
Yes, please. I'd like as much as possible presenting to the public. I understand the need for the Q and A, but I think that these are important topics to be addressed so that the public has an understanding of what it is that we're doing and what that entails and what it means not only to our staff, but to them, their families, to their students' learning. And that's really the heart of why we're here. So I appreciate it through Q and A, but I'd really like to be able to have this more focused for general understanding for all parties involved. Because that's what we're doing, is making a major change and everyone should be aware of its impact, both the positives and the negatives. Because there's always going to be some of that on, no matter what decision we make. And I think that the best thing that we can do as a division is be as transparent as possible. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Mr. Wilk next.
I just, yeah, following up with what Mrs. Williams is saying, I agree. You know, I think last week I was asking pretty thoroughly for a better understanding on how we're getting these calculations and saying we're going beyond the pre-K to three based off of this and that. I was asking specifically how we're getting that. And actually, I don't think that was in the Q and A this week. So those, I agree with you. I think sometimes this type of stuff would be definitely valid for public discussion because, you know, I think we leave a lot of things kind of unsaid or no answers. We get the answers as a board, but then sometimes the public doesn't see it. And I do want to thank though, that Mr. Iman and Dr. Waltz, a lot of those Q and A are posted on the, I want to acknowledge that because I know you're getting ready to fire back.
I was going to say, they all are posted.
They're posted. I see Dr. Waltz giving me the eye. Yes, they are posted on there. And again, I want to encourage everyone, you know, I did a town hall a long time ago and shared my screen and walked people through how to find that and get those things. But a lot of that information, if you're not watching a board meeting or that, you can go on our great COVID-19 Return to Learn dashboard or resource page. That does include all the Q and A. But to your point, Ms. Williams, I do agree, a lot of this stuff, like you brought up about, you know, the programs and such. And I do agree, we are coming towards the end of the year and that we will have SOL tests and stuff like that. And I think that's valid. I will say one thing I do love about the system, and I'll add this probably in my Board Matters in that two, three minutes that I have, is looking at the schools and being in-person and going and visiting seven schools last Friday. One thing the principals highlighted and said what they love is that, yes, families can put them in, like Dr. Waltz highlighted tonight, and they can go in. And then if they realize that's not the experience that they thought it was, they can come back out. And there's actually been even kids who have started off virtual, but then they're opting to actually come back in person because little Jenny comes home and shares the news and then they tell little Billy and Billy's like, "I want to go to school too." So I kind of like that, that ability as best we can. And I know not every school has that ability and there's classroom capacity and stuff like that. But I like that flexibility and continuing to give families the choice, you know, in that case. And I do agree with you. I think, you know, when I first came into a school about a month and a half ago and sat in a kindergarten room all day, it is kind of, you know, very shocking, to say the least, of what you think and what you imagine, what we previously saw as a kindergarten classroom to what it has become now. And I, you know, I just, again, want to commend our teachers who are doing an outstanding job with the concurrent instruction. It is not easy. You know, there are, it seems like everyday technology, there's new resources coming. But with, you know, what we have and our current capabilities, I'm just, I'm just in awe over the work that our teachers are doing with the concurrent instruction, recognizing that in many cases, there are a lot more Zoomies than Roomies, but they're doing a great job balancing that between the two and well beyond me. And I know they've done training and I know they're starting to get kind of in the jive of all this, but it was very hard for me to even read a book to both camera and the kids in the classroom about Santa Claus and stuff. So yes, I get it. But yes, to your point, I know I just went on a giant tangent. I do believe it would be good to have some of these discussions in the public. Thank you.
Ms. Wall? And then Ms. Jessie and then Ms. Jackson. Ms. Wall, next.
Thank you, Chairman Latif. I, kind of following up on what Mr. Wilk was asking, those videos that we made in October and November about returning to the building, I remember we had made some really great videos where we walked kids through, like, "This is what school's going to look like when you go back." I'm assuming that those videos are still relevant for the experience that we have coming up next, next month, I mean, later in this month or next month. Is that correct? We still have those videos up on our website and those videos are still relevant? Like, we haven't changed our return to learn plan in any fundamental way?
The only thing I can think of is we use interchangeably social distance and physical distance.
Okay.
So some signage will reflect social distancing, which was the first term out. And then there was concern that we, that schools across the country were saying, "We don't want you to socialize," whereas we do want kids to call each other, to FaceTime each other, to interact virtually. So some signage may say social distancing, while others may call it physical distancing. That's about the only thing I can think of at the moment that's different. But yes, they are available.
Okay. That's great. Because I do remember that they were fantastic as far as like walking children through, like, what will it look like to get on the bus and how will that be in the classroom and what will wearing a mask look like? And actually, I saw a really great video today from T Clay Wood and it was, you know, it had lots of snapshots of kids in classrooms, what their physical classrooms looked like, how far apart they were and they were wearing masks and they were waving, you know, waving at each other and waving at the camera, I guess. And so those, those are actually really valuable. My other question is, are we collecting data on concurrent instruction, our successes and our challenges? And, or is this happening in a more organic way at the school level, you know, in the teams where the kindergarten and first and second grade, third grade teachers are gathering experiences and then sharing their experiences with our incoming fourth and fifth graders? And my ancillary question is, we have secondary schools, middle schools and high schools that have not had very much concurrent instruction, except maybe in the special ed level. So do we have some kind of cross-team effort going on where we can share what we've learned about concurrent instruction at the elementary school level into our middle and our high schools to prepare those teachers for a successful learning curve, which hopefully will be a much shorter learning curve than what we experienced with our early, our early grade teachers? Do we have some things in place? And if so, could we, could you speak to those just briefly so the public can be aware of the great behind-the-scenes efforts that we're doing to prepare our secondary teachers for what's on the horizon?
So I'll put this into two groupings. The first one had to do with what we are learning organically versus collecting data and so forth about best practices or things that are working. So I would just say that there's almost an unlimited variety of ways in which folks are learning from each other, from very well-professional videos on teaching, concurrent teaching, how to teach in a virtual setting through our vast array of professional development online. And then, of course, you have people working across grade levels within schools, departments working together to share information on what's working and tips on what's working. So there's, that's going on in a variety of ways, off and on, all day, seven days a week. And then your second question, refresh my memory on that, please.
My second question was, what are, what efforts are we taking, what are we doing to help secondary, so middle school and high school, learn from the experiences of our elementary school teachers so that they can have a really successful rollout?
Yes.
You know, because so many of them haven't had the chance to teach concurrently yet, but will very soon.
Yes. So at the secondary level, first of all, when we started reopening, we have made it possible, there are actually some people who prefer to teach in the building, even if they aren't teaching any students in person. So we have employees, I would say probably every building, one or more doing that. But we also afforded certain days and professional development that can be done either individually or there's been a few situations where an entire staff elected to do so in terms of how to most effectively utilize the technology and do concurrent teaching. And then every school, all the secondary schools had one or more days set aside. We encouraged them to provide multiple days where the teachers could come in and work with the technology and practice those things. So I would say much of our workforce has already done that at the secondary level. But everyone will have that opportunity to do before the first day.
Okay. Thank you. I have two small questions. I think they'll be pretty, pretty brief. I know, going back to the vaccine, vaccine question, I know that we have, may have some staff who have procured their vaccinations through other means. Maybe they were at Inova Fairfax or maybe they live in another county where they were eligible. And so are we, do we have a way that we're tracking which of our employees have already received their vaccines through other means? And then is that factoring into the total number of vaccinations that we're counting as far as our staff and school personnel is concerned?
So I will call on either Dr. Eagle, to see if she has the answer to that, or perhaps Ms. Heebner. And while, while one of them is getting ready to respond, I also wanted to mention that there's a lot of cross-conversations going between secondary principals and elementary principals on how these things work. And in fact, as soon as tomorrow, there are some principals at elementary who are hosting high schools for that kind of discussion. And I will also say that initially, I know the middle school principals wanted the ninth grade in for two days each and then they wanted everyone else all together. Now, there's been some discussion among the secondary principals that after listening to all the ramifications of bringing kids back, they may want a slower pace of bringing them back. So one of the things that I will be doing is attending all three-level principals meetings along with the senior staff next Monday and Tuesday to gather input from the principals and also to have that ready for the school board. So what we're trying to do in the meantime, again, is create a climate where people can freely give their views. And just so you know, I said this at all three principals meetings, the last round, there is no company line on this pandemic and our return to in-person versus virtual or a hybrid. There is no company line. So we want to hear the honest feedback of what, what the assessments are in the buildings and that will remain going forward. Did we have an answer to the other question, Dr. Eagle or Ms. Heebner?
Yes. In terms of tracking our staff, I will say, you know, we are tracking the staff that go to Inova, okay, through the form, internal form, because those individuals need... need, will be contacted about, and, and they'll need to return to Inova. It's very important that you do get both shots in the, in the series of inoculation from the same facility, because that's where the vaccines are actually being shipped from the federal government. So that's very important. So we are tracking that. And I believe Novant is actually helping to track the employees that are attending our onsite clinics as well, because that's in a separate registration system through Novant. In terms of employees that are going to other places, you know, in their own locality, or even Kaiser is offering, you know, vaccines to members of PWCS, their members that are employees of PWCS, we are not currently tracking that. We have talked as, you know, right now, we've opened the links up through February 14th, okay? And so we're trying to gauge how many more we're going to need. And so we have talked about doing a staff survey to help us gauge the number of additional clinics that we're going to need to schedule. Right now, about, we have opened it up, as Dr. Walt said, we've sent notifications to over 11,500 staff. And as of this evening, approximately 8,000 staff have actually registered, and we have another couple thousand slots still open the weekend of the 13th and the 14th, but we are continuing to send out additional groups.
Okay, thank you.
And I would also just add that in addition to those meetings I mentioned, the crossover between high school and elementary that are being hosted tomorrow, there's also going to be crossover meetings this Friday for the same purpose.
Oh, that's, that's great news. Thank you, Dr. Walt. I'm glad to hear that we are learning from each other and across the division. And my last question, sorry.
Jen, can you just get closer to the mic?
Yeah, oh, sorry. My last question is, can you please define for us, and I think for the community listening, the definition of an outbreak? Is it five or fewer cases? I know there's like a technical definition of it, but if you wouldn't mind?
Yes, there's a technical definition, but I think I got one word wrong the last time I explained it. So I'm going to ask Ms. Polk to have the honors, please.
Um, Dr. Walt, I apologize. I just got back on, so I got knocked off, so I'm not sure what the question is. I'm sorry.
Okay, so the question, Ms. Polk, was, can you explain how many people are involved and exactly what an outbreak means, when it's, when it's technically an outbreak and then it's put on CDC website?
Oh, okay, all right. Well, first of all, the Health District and Virginia Department of Health are the ones that determine an outbreak, but they must have two positive PCR tests before they will declare that an outbreak. And so there has to be a connection, you know, if you have a couple of individuals or more involved, or that have tested positive in a school or whatever, they have to look at each of the situations very carefully to determine if there's a connection, you know, particularly if they're, you know, well, student, staff, or two students, whatever. So they, they look at the information very carefully, and again, it has, they have to have two of the PCR tests positive before they will, they will declare that that is an outbreak. But that is strictly a decision by the Health District and Virginia Department of Health.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Sure.
Okay, I'm just going to remind the board members, I'm getting texts from home and in the back room. Speak clearly and closely to the mic, it's muffled because of our masks, including the folks coming up to the podium. Next, we'll go to Ms. Jessie, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments to, first of all, I want to thank the entire team, everyone who made this possible, the vaccination. One of the things that, at the last board meeting several times, where I've talked about declining positivity rates and the vaccinations, because at the end of the day, all the teachers were asking for was safety. I've heard so many comments on television here recently about teachers, we, you know, you need to get in there and that they're afraid and whatever. But all these teachers asked for was safety, and so I want to thank all of you for the vaccination plan that you laid out, because I have gotten very few emails, and to be honest with you, I'm very happy about that. The other questions that I have are just clarification. When I look at what you're saying, it seems like, I'm not clear that in-school teachers who are involved in direct instruction, which includes specialists, guidance counselor, and technology teachers that are involved in direct instruction, are they on that list?
Yes, they are. And that would also include bus drivers, you know, the people that are literally working in-person in buildings.
Okay, thank you. The other question, as we look down the road, Dr. Walt, you talk about the fact that you're concerned about middle and high, and I understand it's this cohort where it's different at elementary. I am wondering if at the next, since we have to make decisions at the next board meeting, can we have some middle and high school principals or people talk about what their concerns really are? What concerns me sometimes is that we get these reports, like, I think earlier tonight, there was like 800 staff members, but then we said, but it was only a point one, whatever. So it's almost like we minimize everything, and then we want the board to respond and, and support your, your plans. So I would like to, I'm glad that you're going to meet with principals, because, and I think I, I talked to Mr. Iman, and I said, "You have to create," because later tonight, we're going to talk about this feeling of fear of retaliation and fear of not speaking out. So I'm hoping that we'll get the real deal, because the only way this board can make a decision is based on what is real. So I'm wondering, is it possible to get some middle and high school people in here to tell us as a board what your real concerns are? Because you're, what I heard you say was that you're concerned about bringing in all these new people and the impact of that. And now the vaccine is here, maybe that changes things. But do you, do you understand what my question is? I can try to restate it, but my concern, I think.
I, I understand it, Mrs. Jessie. So I, I know that the, the board went a different direction with the last plan that I proposed, but that plan, what I basically did, and again, I, I certainly want to own the decisions that I make, and that calendar that the board ended up choosing a little more aggressive plan was submitted by me. But when I did it, I was trying to take into account not only the vaccinations, the two vaccinations, but also the maximum of the 14 days. And we know the Pfizer, which I, I just learned that one of the people got Pfizer, which is one week less in between. But that even with the, the fact that it helps just, you know, to get the second vaccination, but to be fully, to get the full power of it, you need the up to 10 additional days. And so I, I used, I counted all of that into that original plan, or not the original plan, but the one that we last, that was last looked at, that I presented. And I still share that concern about our staff having the second vaccination and the time period afterward. But in answer to your other question, yes, we can get representative principals from each level for the next meeting, for you to ask questions directly.
Yeah, I, I think we need to know the real deal. I, I called, I called Ms. Eagle to say thank you for sharing, and also Mr. Provincio for telling us that there were some concerns, and the teachers have been wonderful. And I do think this whole vaccination plan has been tremendous. I would like to know from your communication persons, because I am at home and I have health reasons for being at home, the cameo appearances. Could someone contact me so that when, when you're having those vaccination clinics, so I can make a cameo appearance? I would appreciate that.
Will do. Thank you, Ms. Jessie.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Ms. Jackson.
Hi, I just want to echo everybody's sentiments of gratitude for the presentation and for the vaccine rollout. I just have a quick comment and questions. I also want to say that I agree with Ms. Williams and Mr. Wilks about echo, like, a summary on what the changes mean for virtual donors, and that I appreciate the Q and A that we send, and it helps me prepare for the meetings. And I also appreciate, Dr. Walt, that you're going to meet with the principals and get feedback, and I look forward to either hearing through them or through you, because I feel like the principal's feedback is imperative, especially with everything that's changing every single day. My question tonight just has to do with the second vaccine. I understand, you know, you have to wait a certain amount of time and you get the second vaccine, and then there's time after to build up immunity. But I have gotten some emails about some confusion about how the school system is distributing the second vaccine. So could someone just please talk to how are we facilitating the second vaccine, or are people responsible for getting the vaccine on their own, or, you know, what the plan is for the second vaccine?
Yes. So just to let you know, the reason that I wasn't at the last clinic was I, I thought that there were plenty of people who were going to be there. I was actually at the one the week before, which was Novant's UVA clinic at Prince, at the hospital. And it went brilliantly well. But I can just tell you that when I went through and got the first shot, then you're logged into the computer, you're told when you should expect to get your second notification, and then there's a window of time for you to sign up for that. There may be some more specifics, that's my, you know, personal experience with the teachers that I was vaccinated with. But Mrs. Polk, would, do you have any, anything else that you want to add about how that vaccination of the second vaccination works? And certainly, Ms. Bellamy, if you, if, whomever, I, I like to call on our health experts when we have those kind of questions.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Walt. Well, certainly, as, you know, everyone is receiving their first vaccine. They, at the clinics that Novant is doing, before they leave, the individuals leave, they are given a card with the information on the vaccine that they received. And of course, the first vaccines that they were giving were the Moderna vaccine. And so the individuals are given a, a card, and they are to, I believe they're to, now, I'll have to, and anyone else should jump in right here, because I wasn't there, I did not really work with the people as they were checking out. But they will be notified about when they are to return for their second vaccine. So, you know, no one should have to worry that they're not going to be informed about when that second vaccine is due. And HR is really doing a very good job of keeping track and making sure that employees are aware that, you know, they're eligible for the vaccine, and then when they're due to go back, they need, they will be notified. And I, I know that through the system, and I call, I think they call it VAMS, once you get your first vaccine, they actually do send out emails to check up on you, to make sure you're doing okay. And if you have any particular concerns, you can certainly let them know. I think one important thing that I've heard, and I believe is correct, is that when you get the vaccine at the one location, you cannot just decide on your own that you're going to go somewhere else to get your second vaccine. Typically, you're going to need to go back to the location that you received your first vaccine, and so that you get your second one. But that may vary a bit, but I think most of the folks are being told that they need to go back to the same location. And please, Ms. Bellamy or Denise, I'm not Ms. Heedner, if you'd like to speak up and share any information about that.
We have Ms. Heedner here, she'll answer.
Yes.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Polk. So there are several different situations going on with our staff members who receive vaccinations. We have some staff members who qualified through 1B and registered ahead of the Prince William County Schools Vaccination Clinic. So they've received their shots at a variety of different places, some through their local health district, some through Inova Fairfax, and that was done independently outside of Prince William County. They should have received instructions from whoever it is that provided them their first dose for second dose return, because the federal government is shipping second doses, and those institutions will receive that directly. So it's important that they return to the same location where they received their first dose in general. We have a second group of, of staff members that we've mentioned, we're early on, our tier-one employees and some additional employees now, with, we're calling our quick turnaround appointments, that are, have received their, their vaccination through Inova. And Inova has given instructions that you may honor a walk-in appointment, very similar to the way that you did your first appointment. You bring your white CDC card with you 17 to 21 days after your initial appointment, because at Inova, those staff members have received a Pfizer vaccine. The staff members that are participating in our Novant clinics, when you register, you are registering in our new system, brand-new, pre-mod system, and you entered all of your information, your data, your phone number, and your email address, and your, your follow-up appointment will be issued to you. You will be allowed to schedule. We have our follow-up clinics scheduled within the timeframe for Moderna, that is a four-week turnaround time, and we do already have those scheduled at Unity Reed High School, and you'll be receiving electronic notification of those appointments. So I hope that clarifies.
And I do want to make one point really clear, and that is that HR is not tracking individually which employees have received the vaccine. It is not mandatory at this time, nor do we include that in employees' personnel files at this time.
Okay, thank you, everybody, and thanks for the clarification, Dr. Eagle. That's, that's all. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Ralston, did you have anything?
I'm sorry.
Can you unmute?
Oh, I'm sorry. Nothing other than I'm when I got my, my shots.
All right.
At, at least my first shot. I'm looking for, I couldn't find exactly where maybe the needle had been pricked on me.
Yes.
Because it never hurt. So I was trying to tell people, "This is okay." So I think that if we continue to talk about it, and we continue to say that this was a great experience to see a group of people all doing the same thing. So, but I thank everybody. I'm looking forward to finally having my second one, but I have to wait for at least two weeks.
Fantastic, Ms. Ralston.
All I have left is two weeks. Mm-hmm. Yep. So, but I thank you, and I saw you, and we, we met, and I was pleased and happy.
We were thrilled to see you, Ms. Ralston. We were thrilled to see you, and you look more radiant after your first shot than you have normally. So you look fabulous. Thank you. So I think that will wrap up. If anyone has further questions, you know where these folks' emails are and how to track them down. What's that? Oh, Dr. Walt. Yes, sorry.
Wrap up, I, I just wanted to share one kind of humorous story, because I, I think it serves Mrs. Ralston's purpose. So, you know, I, I'm not a person who likes shots, and, well, I'll just leave it at that. So when I got there at UVA Health System, Prince William Medical Center, there was a, I recognized, because every time I go to a building, I always go and see the nurse. I've done that for 15, 16 years now. And so I know a lot of them, and they had some kind of a, I don't know what it was, lottery of, of who was going to give me the shot. And I don't know if it was rigged or not, but with my daughter going to Cogan, I got Pam Johnson. And it was really funny, because it was the first shot I've ever received that I did not feel the shot go in. I did not feel it there. You know, hopefully, everybody has a great experience like this. There was no swelling, there was no redness, nothing. And it was funny, because you have to wait a few minutes afterward just to make sure you don't have any reaction. And the nurse over at Cogan's name is Pam Johnson. So another, those nurses can be kind of honorary. And, and Mrs. Bellamy was there, she was riding herd over him that day, and one of the other nurses came over right after Mrs. Johnson gave me the injection, and she said, "If you have any problems," like, five hours later, it was Pam Johnson. Pam Johnson gave you that. Pam Johnson gave you that. But luckily, I did. But the esprit de corps among the nurses that day, and it sounds like the clinic that many of you were involved in. Dr. Latif, I know you were at both of them. But just amazing spirit and great can-do positive attitude. It was so impressive. And all these things you see on the news about the long lines and all of that, I will just say the experience that we're getting is like the exact opposite of that. Extremely well organized and you know exactly what to do and where to go. And there's no setting in a car for hours on end or standing in the freezing cold. So our folks have done an amazing job and our health district has done an amazing job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. And I think the esprit de corps is the right sort of comment about the, the spirit of the, the work that everyone did. And I think you nailed it. I'm just sad I wasn't there to give you your shot. I would have made sure you felt it. But, 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 but fortunately for you and unfortunately for me, that didn't work out that way. But another funny story I had, while I was giving a few of the vaccines, I had, it's clear I'm not the most popular member of the board with our faculty. But one, one, one very, very jokingly said, do you, do you know, are you sure you know what you're doing, Dr. Latif? I said, well, if it was in your eye, I'd feel a lot more comfortable. But I'll, I'll, I'll try my best in your shoulder and we'll see where this goes. But thank you very much, great report, Ms. Heebner. Just a couple of things, you know, I started out with just congratulating you on the vaccine. I, I think it's important as we continue the discussion and on February 17th, it's important as the CDC continues to say, and you know, all health experts, VDH, VDO, the vaccine is not required to go in to, to, for the mitigation standards. It is the ultimate mitigator. I think it's important that as our special ed teachers and first grade teachers and all them look on, we've asked them to come in without the vaccine and, and all of us need to thank them even more for the work that they've done. And, you know, they sometimes sit at home and say, look at these guys talking about the vaccine. They didn't really care about that when they sent us in. And I, I want to thank them. They are our frontline heroes and, and I do appreciate it. And, 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 you know, sometimes that may not come through on, on the way I speak here on the, on the board. But you are our front lines and you've carried this division and done things that no one else in Northern Virginia has done for our students in ways that no other school division could deliver. That's a testament to Dr. Walts, the entire team, all of our teachers and staff. And no one can thank you all enough for what you have done. And that's all our special ed, ESOL, you know, first, second, third grade. And then all the work we're doing virtually. All of our teachers in pre-K and all of our teachers who are doing the virtual work for the secondary and high school. It is not easy. We understand. It is not hard and you've all been asked to do something more than anyone's been asked. And I applaud Dr. Walts' proposed budget. When in our school division, which I understand no other school division in the region, or maybe one, we're going to do a step in a cola this year in the midst of a pandemic on top of a step last year. We do value the work of our teachers and this board and this superintendent have, at least on the years I've been on this board, this will be my fourth budget, put in a step in a cola every single year. Last year, we couldn't do, deliver on the cola because of the pandemic, but we were the only division to give a, a step. And so I, I think, you know, that is a small thank you. But it is, it is important as the culture in the division that Dr. Walts has created to, as he pointed out in the budget, whenever he was feasible, they tried to do what they could. And this board has worked really hard to help him get more to do more for everyone. And so I want to thank you. I would just point out to, to, to our pandemic team and Dr. Walts, that there are studies out there. I know Jen Wall referred to some of the things about what's going on across the country. There are studies on cohorting and not cohorting and, and the lack of spread or outbreak in the secondary and high school levels across the nation, even when you cannot cohort. And so that has been very refreshing. Many people are pointing to that data as experts around the country and around the world continue to say, you know, it's time to go back in. So anyways, we will now go to our last presentation of the evening, which will be 1703, the quarterly report from our ombudsman, Sarah Espinosa. Ms. Espinosa, I think you can take it from here.
Thank you, Dr. Latif, school board members and Dr. Walts, for the opportunity to present the Office of the Ombudsman's second quarter report. Next slide, please. As you know, the Office of the Ombudsman provides confidential, impartial and informal assistance to employees, parents, members of the community to resolve division-related concerns, conflicts and issues. We do this in accordance with the International Ombudsman Association's Code of Ethics. The first, in the first half of this fiscal year, from July 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020, there were 83 visitors to the Office of the Ombudsman. Of that 83, 47 visitors made initial contact in the second quarter. So that's October 1st to December 31st. Of those 47 visitors, 43 were employees of the division and four were parents or community members. Next slide, please. Part of the responsibility of the Office of the Ombudsman is not only to assist individual visitors in identifying their interests and the options available to them so that they can make the decision that makes the most sense for them, but also to categorize the issues that are heard in the office. And we do that utilizing the uniform reporting categories that are suggested by the International Ombuds Association. And again, we do this keeping confidential the identity of the visitors. So what I want to particularly point out to you about the second quarter data is that there are two most frequent or most prevalent categories. One is the evaluative or supervisor, supervisee relationships. And that category has consistently been the top category identified as a concern to visitors of the Office of the Ombudsman. But in the second quarter, there was another category that was cited equally. And that had to do with safety, health and physical environment. So within the evaluative or supervisor-employee relationship categories, there were some often most expressed related subcategories. And so those were retaliation or fear of retaliation, communication and departmental climate. Then, within the concerns in the safety, health and physical environment category, those most often cited subcategories were safety. And so that really had to do with safety of in-person learning and mitigation measures as well as telework or the ability to have a virtual assignment. Next slide, please. Additionally, in looking at the data from the beginning of the fiscal year, so July 1st through December 31st, I identified a division-wide pattern of concern and then two concerns related specifically to school locations. So in terms of the division-wide pattern of concern identified, this had to do with employees with underlying medical conditions at increased risk for severe illness in the event that they contract COVID-19. Or as we refer to these employees here, tier one employees. And these employees raise concerns about the processes employed and determinations made related to virtual assignments. Specifically, visitors express concerns related to the manner in which the division engages in the, engaged in the interactive process to determine reasonable accommodation, the lack of virtual assignments with visitors perceiving and sharing ways in which they believe that they could perform the responsibilities of their positions virtually, but that those options were ultimately not accepted by their administrator. And perceived inequities between those teachers and school-based staffs who were provided virtual assignments and those who are not offered such assignments, both within certain schools and in comparison with other schools. Many of these visitors also expressed their belief that the division was not valuing their contributions or their health by not providing virtual assignments. I will note that this is a snapshot in time of the visitors who are coming to see me between July 1st, 2020 and December 31st, 2020. And so this was pre-vaccination. Additionally, there, in reviewing the data from the first half of the year, two specific schools were identified in terms of a compilation of concerns. And these concerns were brought to the attention of the division leadership while protecting the anonymity of the visitors. Concern one involved an elementary school where employee and parent visitors expressed concerns related to school leadership, lack of clear and timely communication and perceived lack of transparency in relation to budget and staffing decisions. Visitors also shared that they feared retaliation and/or believed that they had been retaliated against as a result of expressing concerns. Concern two involved a middle school where employee visitors expressed concerns related to supervisory effectiveness, perceived favoritism and lack of clear and timely communication. And again, these visitors shared that they feared retaliation or believed that they had been retaliated against as a result of expressing concerns in the past. Next slide, please. So I'll just take this opportunity to remind the community and employee community that the Office of the Ombudsman can be reached either by email or by phone. And that everything that comes to the Office of the Ombudsman is confidential. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me. Thank you.
Can I see the screen, Mr. Stevens? Anybody have anything here? Okay. Anybody at home have a question? Jason, can you show the whole screen for the whole team? Great. Ms. Jesse?
I don't have a lot of que, well, I do have questions, but I want to thank the, thank you for the report. I think it, the fear of retaliation is the, the thing that I consistently hear from teachers and other people in various platforms. And so, Dr. Walts, when you are meeting with the principals, hopefully you will share that. And because the only way we can, the only way we can really approach this pandemic is to have people tell us the truth. And I, again, I want to thank you for opening your office. It sounds like there's an open relationship and a confidentiality, but I think it's an excellent report. I find it also interesting, the evaluation, which is always the problem when teachers, that teachers are coming to you or staff members are coming to you. And when we created this office, we want to have an office where teachers felt comfortable coming to an individual. But I think they also want to know that we're going to follow up on their concerns. So my, my comments tonight are comments and questions, but I want to compliment you on your office. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I see the screen, Mr. Stevens? Ms. Jackson? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just want to, just to make a quick comment that I'm just very grateful for this, the Office of the Ombudsman and the opportunity it provides our employees and family members in this county. Thank you.
Ms. Wall?
I also wanted to thank Ms. Espinosa for her work. And I feel like she's a very valuable addition to our school division. And you do a very valuable work for us. We really appreciate your efforts and we hope that staff and, and the community at large, it looks like our staff has definitely discovered you and that's awesome. And we're hoping, you know, that you continue to be able to provide that outreach. I know with the pandemic, it's been hard to get into the schools and to meet with parents and let parents know that you're also available. But we really, I mean, I really appreciate your work and your efforts and you provide a really valuable service to us. So thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo the comments of my fellow board members. And I appreciate the service that you provide to our, really our county and Prince William County School families. I'm thankful that you were able to continue to operate during the pandemic. And I appreciate you coming before us to give a report. I think it's also serves a purpose in reminding our Prince William County School families that you are there. Your door is open, be it virtual or physically, for people to have their concerns addressed. And again, that this information is, as transparent as permitted by law and, and what your office does, does come back to the board and to the division so that we can continue to learn and grow and evolve. So I'm very appreciative of everything that your office does. And thank you again for continuing to keep us informed.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Espinosa, appreciate it. And then that leads us into our last item, which is Board Matters. I think we'll start with Ms. Williams tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep it brief considering we're limited on what we can talk about. I am just really excited to enter budget season. I will say, full disclosure, I do miss Mr. Trinum at this time of year. His eyes would be just lighting up and glistening from across the dais. So I'll do my best to get excited and carry on that tradition. But I, I know that board members always appreciate when we get feedback from the community and from our school staff in any way, shape or form. We're only one set of eyes on a $1.2 billion budget. So it is, we do appreciate any input that comes our way with respect to that. Also, I just again want to thank all of our staff who have been in the buildings. Pre-K is often left out, all of our resource teachers, elementary, special ed, everyone who has continued to educate our students from in the buildings. And I just can't say enough, you know, there's, there's so much rhetoric around opening schools. I can't say enough how proud I am of this school division from being open day one. That's a big deal. And we continue to add more students to in-building learning. But I just don't ever want us to get caught up in a rhetoric that we forget that our teachers and our, our staff have done an exceptional, beyond exceptional job to continue to educate our students since the first day of school, whether they were in a building or learning virtually. And all of the leaps and bounds that they continue to do to educate our students that they can continue to learn and grow is just amazing and commendable. I also look forward to, you know, getting the updates at our February 17th meeting on what, getting a better, better picture about bringing more students back into buildings to learn. Between now and then, we have a lot of budget workshops and budget issues. And then the board will also continue to do its work for the school division and looking for a new superintendent. So I hope that the public continues to remain engaged and participates as much as possible because this is the time of year that we rely on those extra eyes and to help us see the things that are also a priority and important. And, and again, when it comes to equity, I also look forward to learning more about our division's definition of equity and what that means in our budget and our strategic plan. Thank you.
Wonderful. I'll go to, we'll go to the house, to the virtual folks, Ms. Diane Ralston.
Thank you very much. I, I want to thank everybody for all the energy that you have been using over time. Our teachers have just been, you know, just stalwart. But I hope that as we move along down the line here, that we'll, we'll see a clear day. Our health will be fine. We can all enter back into and feel comfortable about being there. So, take care.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Lily Jesse?
Ms. Lily Jesse? Okay. I just want to thank the teachers. I said at the beginning that all they ask for is safety. And in Ms. Buzzman's report, she says that many of the visitors expressed their perception that the division does not value their contribution or help. And I think that we have to change that perception because I think it is a misperception. I think members of this board, we all, we have different ways of looking at things. But I think that there's no one on this board that I know of that does not value the health and well-being of teachers. And I also
And I also wanted to make a note that the Woodbridge High School, I was able to go into a virtual learning class to see their cosmetology lab and watch this teacher do this Zoom meeting of rollers, putting rollers in the hair. It was really so synchronized, I couldn't believe it. But when people say children are not learning, they really are learning. The teachers, the in-person learning is important, but they are learning virtually. And I just want to thank Dr. Walts and his staff for putting up with us because every, I know you come into this room every, every board meeting, you never know what you're going to, what we're going to ask. And also to Ms. Pope and the nurses, you guys, you guys rock. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Adele Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I just want to say this week is School Counselor Appreciation Week, and I want to thank the school counselors for their dedication to the staff and students during this time. I know that some have returned to the buildings and some are virtual, but thanks to all school counselors for adjusting their craft and techniques to meet the needs of students during this pandemic. I also want to continue to thank administration, especially to those who are taking the time to meet with me or talk with me. And I extend a huge amount of gratitude to staff that, all staff, especially those who are in the building, and of course, our wonderful food service workers. I was able to go this past weekend to one of three Brentsville's wonderful high schools, Unity Read, and it was a huge operation. I am very grateful to Ms. Hubner, Ms. Polk, Ms. Bellamy, Ms. Slater, and the rest of the staff, along with the nurses and our partnership with Novant, and of course, to Dr. Nichols for, you know, his assistance with Unity Read being the place where we're giving out vaccines. And as always, I just want to ask the community to continue to prioritize returning to face-to-face instruction and follow CDC guidelines and recommendations. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I also want to highlight a School Counseling Appreciation Week. Counselors, you are so very important. You are fulfilling a very important role right now, especially at this time of increased social and emotional stress, and we thank you and honor the work that you do. I also wanted to invite the members of the community to attend a webinar, which will be this tomorrow evening, February 4th, beginning at 7:00 PM. There is information on the website, also through social media, PWCS sites for safety around social media and virtual learning. Our children and youth are online now more than ever before, and this is intended to be a conversation around social media, its impact on today's youth. Topics will include social media's influence on our youth, how to develop healthy digital habits, how to protect their reputation, and how to be safe online, parents, what to look out for, what to do if you have seen something that concerns you, and how to build, use this technology in positive ways. The webinar is one hour long, and it will involve a 30-minute Q and A afterwards following the presentation. The information for registering for this webinar is available online. I really encourage participants to sign up for it. I also want to echo my fellow board members' comments on Vaccination Clinic. That was an incredibly well-run event, and thank you to everybody who's been so important in that. Vaccinations are a huge game changer. I could not be more pleased with the efforts so far. To be clear, our return to building plan is not built upon the strength of vaccinations alone, but also on all of the mitigation efforts that we have put in place. I just want to reiterate the same things that my colleagues have said, which is, this is very important, these choices are very complex, we are all in this together, and as we move forward, I hope that we can work together to continue to ask how we're going to make this happen for the sake of our youth and our children who are really depending on us. So thank you, everybody, for your comments tonight, and thank you very much, families and teachers and parents for hanging in there with us.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everyone. You know, a lot of stuff has already been echoed and said. I just, you know, want to talk a little bit. Last Friday, I did visit seven of my elementary schools, Ashland, Patty, Montclair, Covington, Harper, Williams, Henderson, and Dumfries to talk with the principals and their administrative staff about the process and the return to learn for the projected fourth and fifth graders. Had very good and candid conversations with them. One thing I respect about my principals, and hopefully they respect about me, is we can have very transparent dialogue, to which I will not take offense, and I feel like I can trust them on their guidance and their beliefs on what we can do to return our students, more of them into in-person learning. I did want to highlight that, you know, I did see some great things, outstanding mitigation strategies, full PPE on display, and this, these were unannounced visits, by the way, so they were not coordinated. It was me literally driving around in my truck and stopping by and visiting, and my administrators at the building. I saw a lot of engaged students, but not all. It's not a perfect solution. I'll be very transparent, you know? I mean, like you, like Ms. Williams and I were, she was saying earlier, it's a very different classroom environment now. And, but I did see a lot of good, I've heard a lot of good stories, some that I'll share in two weeks, about the benefits of it. I do want to, you know, again, we've heard it over and again, our dedicated staff, the people who have been in the building since day one, I think this board is, you know, still working and trying to figure out some type of hero compensation pay or something for those who have been in person. That is definitely something that's needed. You know, being taken around by the principals to not only see the teachers, our special ed teachers self-contain special needs rooms that they say a lot of visitors don't come into. I do like to go in there. I like to be a part of that. As a parent of a special needs child, I want to see what that environment looks like during these times. Our cafeteria workers are doing outstanding work, getting to go back in the kitchens. They've been in day one. I want to recognize also our custodians doing the great work there. And of course, our principals all across the board, they've been there, leading the charge all throughout the summer and doing an outstanding job. And we often kind of forget about them in the process here with Mike last time. I do want to, again, recognize Ms. Bellamy, Ms. Polk, Ms. Hubner. Lucky is not here tonight, but she was phenomenal in our, phenomenal on our IT team, working like the last couple of days straight, getting everything set up at Unity Read. So we thank her. It was a great program. I was happy to be there on Sunday and be a part of it and just talk with people. I think Ms. Wall said that it's just great to have the conversations and hear about, not all positives, I'm not going to lie, you know, there are some people who wouldn't look at me, and that's fine. It's life. But had some great conversations with teachers and people who work, our staff who are in person right now. But looking forward to continuing to talk to my principals, see my time is up. It's great that we are almost out of here before nine o'clock, so thank you so much.
Oh, my God.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. So I want to thank Dr. Walts, John Wallingford, our finance team. This was the evening of the great unveiling of our budget for fiscal year 2021, '22. And I have to say that I think, as Dr. Walts pointed out earlier, we'd be pleasantly pleased, or I don't know the exact term, but I think we were. I am excited. The highlights in the budget are the step in COLA, the commitments to making some investments in equity. I think, you know, the thing that really rings strongly three years in a row with no increase in healthcare costs for the division is a remarkable accomplishment and credit to our HR and benefits teams of prior Amy White and now Dr. Eagle, all of them putting together this effort. This really, it makes the step in a COLA a real step in a COLA. You know, it doesn't get washed out with increases in healthcare that could wipe out a percent or two. And so three years in a row of no increase in healthcare costs that's being passed on to the employee is really incredible work. And that makes, again, the step in COLAs that we've delivered really important. You know, I came on this board with a commitment to making sure we reimburse our entire school division and staff in a way that I believe they deserve. We're far behind our neighbors, and I think in these last couple of years, we've been able to make some real significant gains. And so, Dr. Walts, congratulations on the initial rollout of the budget. I really look forward to working with you and your team to get this budget adopted by this board and then presented to our Board of County Supervisors. Again, I want to thank Governor Northam, the First Lady, Secretary Carney for showing up at our clinic this weekend. Outstanding. We have a long way to go. We got a lot more shots to get into arms, and we're going to get there. It's very exciting. Every data point continues to be further and further leading to optimism to move our students back in. And so I look forward to continuing to stay on track where we would like to go. So to wrap up this evening, again, thank you. I know, you know, today and tomorrow, the next few days, there's going to be some, you know, for our high school seniors and Ben Kim, who was here earlier tonight, and, you know, we heard from Ms. Menivar last week about, you know, they're hearing about their admissions. You know, I'd like to, I'd like everyone to remember, our seniors particularly, that, you know, your college admission decisions are not character judgments or predictions of future potential. Getting in or not getting in to a particular school does not change who you are, the feasibility of your goals, or define you in any substantive way. These next few weeks, there's going to be some announcements of early decisions, early admissions. There's going to be rolling admissions. We're going into the months where you're going to start hearing. And I want you to know that every high school counselor and teacher that you've had and teacher you've had over the years cares deeply about you. And the thing that I, when I write a reference letter that I think rings most strongly in the final line is, you will be missed when you leave here. And so for any university, they will be lucky to have our students, our Prince William County students, because I can promise you that those institutions will miss you when you are gone and when you leave. And I can say that about our school division. It is why I want to get you guys back in buildings, because I miss you when we're gone, and we don't want to miss you anymore. But, but we have some good weeks with some good news coming up ahead, and so I'm excited for our seniors. And I continue to remind everyone that we do have seniors who are in most important parts of their lives this year, and please support them and continue to support our high school counselors and all of our counselors. And, and Dr. Walts, thank you, and I've taken a little bit extra time. The investments in counselors that you continue to put in this budget and school psychologists, very commendable, and I think are really, really important aspects to this budget that should not be overlooked. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening, and this meeting is adjourned.